You're asking somebody?
Yeah, we were like this is-
We put a robe on.
I know, we went in the robe room and that was, I think that's something that people just don't normally get to see.
She'll make a great judge.
Yes, she will. And then it popped in on Kenny Griffiths, because he had recently been on the show. That was fun. And just so people will know, you can go back and watch them. We've had the Speaker, Jason White, we've had Lieutenant Governor, Delbert Hoesman, we had Shanda Yates that came on, and we'll talk a little bit more about her later. We have Briggs Hobson, Sean Tindall. I just mentioned Kenny, Willie Simmons. Willie Simmons, was that not incredible?
Yeah. It was good.
And for him to be able to talk and talk about his childhood and growing up, you know, on a sharecropper farm and, I mean, I wonder how many people out there really even knew that about him?
No, very few.
Very few. And just he was so open, you know, in talking about his family and his upbringing, and of course, he's very proud of all his children and his grandchildren, as he should be. But I thought that was great. And then Wendy Bailey, that was fun, having Wendy in and talking about, because we just had a ribbon cutting from her, you know, over there. And that was great. Andy Gibson coming in, and then Jarred Gilbert, and I can't help but mention, one that was really, we were just talking about it, was Ted Booth from, from PA.
Peer.
Peer. Now, I want you to talk a little bit about Ted, because if you don't know, PA is your investigative- Investigative committee. And it's kind of like IA, I guess. You get a PA investigation, you don't want to see them coming.
You don't want PA coming to your agency.
I mean, it was, you need to go back and watch it, because I liked the idea that you could invite them in, you know, as an agency head, and say, "Help me understand where my inefficiencies are," especially if you're new and you're just appointed.
And they do, and they do a great job. They really do. And Ted's only been there, what, 30s?
Thirty-something years, yeah.
Thirty-six, maybe.
Right. He's had every job I think they have there.
Yeah, it was really good.
And it was really a fun interview. So was there one that stuck out in your guys' mind over the year? That was maybe one of your favorite ones?
Oh, wow. I enjoyed all of them.
Yeah, I was just going to say, everyone, every guest that I had and every guest that he had, they were all good. They provided a lot of information. I know most of the people that watch the show was not aware of what all was involved in the mental health and what all was involved in highway department. It's just, it's, I mean, it's every one of those things, you know, the, all the information that was provided for the fair when Andy was, when Andy came on. And, you know, just, there's a lot of things that goes on in this state that most people don't have any idea that's going on.
Yeah, and I thought Briggs Hobson did a really good job. And I really appreciate the Lieutenant Governor, because what people don't know out here is he came and did this show, and then somehow it got messed up. You remember the sound didn't work, and he had to come back and do it again. So I appreciate him doing that. So he had to do two for one there.
Two for one. That was fun. All right, so I enjoyed it. We just recently had the mayor on too, and we recapped-
He made a good job.
What Jake, he did a great job. He's my favorite one.
You hear that, don't you?
Yeah, you hear that Jake, right? Yeah, you're my favorite one. All right, so legislatively, this year, let's talk about a little bit of, let's do some kudos. Let's talk about what we have done. Now, I know, one of the biggest things that I think is important to you is that is the amount of debt that's been paid off. Share that.
Actually, just a few minutes ago, on the back of an envelope, wrote down a few things that we have done this year.
Right.
Well, in the last six years, let's say this, we paid off over a billion dollars in state-
Now, repeat that.
One billion with a B.
It was about more like a billion and a half?
Well, no. Well, yeah, it's really 1.2 billion is what it is.
And state debt that has been retired?
Retired debt.
Wow.
We've also given the teachers and state employees pay raises. We've also, in education, you know, from 48th in our testing and standings to like 15th or 16th. We've cut taxes, and we've cut back the size of government. And still, we have one, the number you were thinking about, 1.5 billion dollars, maybe a little more, in reserves in early day finance. This state is in the best financial shape it's ever been in, ever. And that doesn't just-
Like ever?
Ever, since we became a state. I mean, it's unbelievable. So, and that didn't just happen. I mean, that happens to good leadership, like Gene and others-
Sure.
On both sides, because it takes both sides to do anything. So I, you know, when you think about all the things that we've done, and people say, "They don't do anything up there." Well, those things don't just happen. You know, I mean, somebody has to work really hard, and you have to have some good leadership to make it happen. And we've done that. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. We've got more to do. And I'm real proud of the things happening in Pearl and Rankin County.
No kidding.
A lot of good things. You know, the Highway Patrol building is opening up in December, by the way. And they'll have a ribbon cutting out there for that. On the 25th, they're going to have a ribbon cutting for the new-
The new Dean Kirby Expressway.
I don't think it's going to be that.
It's going to be the new Dean Kirby Expressway, right Gene?
We'd call that, nobody-
That's what it says, the new Dean Kirby Expressway. That's what we need to call it. Ties right into the Ray Rogers, Ray Rogers Road and Dean Kirby Expressway. There you go.
Well, I don't know about all that, but it's really going to be nice. And Willie Simmons was excited about it. I got him more excited when I was telling him about if something happens to-
Let's call this meeting to order.
Alderman Stovall. Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Dennis.
Here.
Alderman Broadwater.
Here.
Alderman Foy.
Here.
Alderman Knight.
Here.
Alderman Foster.
Here.
Alderman Foy is going to lead us in prayer this evening.
Our most gracious heaven Father, send me a prayer. Thank you for deceiving me of your Lord and your grace.
That our city, the homeowners have the same, that we have the same respect for them. Because when our rentals, if the land, a lot of our landlords don't even live here. So they, and so they're having to make sure that every year they're having to get that bond, every year they're having to pay a registration fee, were on their minds. So their property here is on their mind, instead of just getting a check in the mail.
And so this is also an effort to maintain home values?
Absolutely.
In the City of Pearl from the inside out?
And I can say that because I am a homeowner here.
But here's, also, talking to code enforcement within the City of Pearl. Our full-time code enforcement officer, a part-time code enforcement officer. Eighty-five percent of infractions that we have to take care of are on rental houses, not on homes that have mortgages.
Absolutely.
I also spoke with our planner, and keep in mind, we're going through a comp plan, like land use plan and all that stuff right now. But I spoke with her as well today and went over these and she had no issue with any of them. I agree.
So it's certainly a public hearing. I know that there's some people that'd like to speak to some of these potential changes. So if anybody would like to approach the podium at this point, this would be your time to have a conversation with the board. All right. Is there anyone that's?
Mayor, I do have a quick question. So I see on the amendments, we're changing both the registration fee, which is going from fifty to one hundred.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's going from a charge of whenever there's a change of occupancy to now be annual.
No, that's going from whenever they're registered as a rental property to now be annual.
When the, when the original, when the board originally set for us to have registrations on our rentals back several, several years before I even got here, they were annually. It was twenty-five dollar fee and they were done annually. Well then, when in seventeen, eighteen, we decided we'd just do them one time. Then once we added the bonds on it, now we're seeing these landlords, they're not renewing these bonds. And then, so this is our way to make sure they maintain the property, they keep the bonds up. Essentially, it's their business. I mean, they, they are running a business in the City of Pearl and it would be just no different than them paying a privilege license to the City of Pearl like all other businesses in the city do. We don't regulate privilege license. The state of Mississippi regulates the prices on the privilege license.
So, Isaac, I messed up. Should've got you up here sooner, man. My bad. So, with that being said, again, I want to invite, is anybody here to speak in opposition of these amendments of the official zoning language? All right. If not, is there a motion to approve? Second. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Moving forward.
Number two, consider request by Rankin First Economic Development Authority for a dimensional variance to allow one hundred maximum, one hundred foot maximal height building instead of the allowed thirty-five foot maximal height building on their property on parcel numbers F O eight three and F O seven eleven.
Garrett, do you mind approaching the podium again? Yeah.
We'll do number three at the same time. Consider request by Rankin First Economic Development Authority to rezone the property located at parcel number F zero eight three dash twenty from C two, General Commercial District two, I one, limited industrial district.
Garrett, do you mind just move forward, tell us a little bit of what you need from the board this evening?
Yep. So, on a regular basis, we work lots of industrial projects. I think on any given year, we'll work a hundred projects if we win one or two of them. It's been a great year. On a standard basis, we chase mostly advanced manufacturing projects. That's exactly what we're chasing for this site right here. We're not chasing smoke stacks, we're not chasing chemical productions, it's advanced manufacturing operations. And what we've seen from companies that have visited, they need a height somewhere in the eighty to hundred foot range, sometimes even slightly higher than that. But that is what we're getting requested over and over. So this is a proactive measure from our behalf for Rankin First. That way, when we do get a company in tow, we can say, look, you're advanced manufacturing, we've already got this height variance in place for you. You don't have to worry about going through a thirty-day public notice period and then going through the public hearing process. We've already done that. So this is a proactive approach to go ahead and get this site where it needs to be for advanced manufacturing projects. We're not chasing heavy industrial, that would be I two there, and that's not what we have on this site.
All right, gentlemen, do y'all have any questions for Garrett? We've went over some of this in the work session, but we would like to handle both of these items at one time, if it's okay with the board. Is there a second? Discussion, just for the sake of the public hearing, is anyone here to speak in opposition at this time? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Number four, consider request by S E Florence for a conditional use permit to allow her to operate an adult day services program for individuals with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities and pre-allowed airport access.
Hey, how are you this evening?
Hi, how are y'all this evening?
Good, good.
I'm S E Florence and this is my business partner, Marie Abston. And we're here to request a conditional use permit for our business located, that will be located in three eleven Airport Road. We are business owners of Hamilton Davis Mental Health and Hamilton Davis Home Care, and we've been owners since two thousand and ten of that business. We currently operate in the City of Flowood, and we would like to move our business to the City of Pearl, where I reside. I'm a homeowner in Mr. Foster's ward, and I would like to move our business to Pearl.
Is that location currently in adult services?
No.
Adult services is not?
It's not. There's one next door, adult services. We provide mental health services to the elderly, I'm sorry, to individuals with intellectual disabilities. And from my understanding, the business next door provides adult day services to the elderly and disabled. So we're not competitors, but we are both day care centers.
Okay.
Adult day care.
I see. Brad, do you mind approaching the podium, please?
It's the old U S P A location.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I had spoken with her earlier. Yeah, like I say, the tight business they do have, it's basically bringing them out of a home setting, bringing them for activities, you know, to get them out of the home, which is, you know, is a good thing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like I say, I would recommend approving.
Okay. Other questions by the board?
So, for your clients, do y'all have services that go out and pick them up, bring them back to your facility, and transport them back and forth?
They live in our residential properties, so we transport them from our residential properties to the, to the building. We will.
How many residential properties do you currently?
We currently have seven residential properties, and we transport those individuals to our location for services, for day services.
And where are those locations?
They're in Jackson.
So y'all pick them up, bring them to your facility, approve them, and transport them up?
Yes.
Approximately how many clients do y'all service?
Right now, we have about sixteen.
Sixteen?
Uh-huh, sixteen.
Thank you.
What are, like, hours of operation?
From eight to two.
And we are certified by the Mississippi Department of Mental Health.
Yes, we also have a home health business as well that'll be there. And those individuals, they're in the home, so the employees are the only ones that come to the office. Those, we service individuals in their home, provide daily living services for them.
So what kind of services do we have?
Mental health services. So, the individuals, they have intellectual disabilities, so when they come to our facility, they'll receive different therapeutic activities, services, and we do outings, we go on outings and just activities to help them be independent.
And be able to function in the community.
Do y'all also have clients who are dropped off by like a family member, or are they all housed at your?
Occasionally, occasionally, they'll be dropped off by a family member, but we mostly do all the transporting, even for the individuals who don't live in our residential properties.
Any additional questions, gentlemen? If not, is there anyone speaking opposition of this? This conditional use? If not, is there a motion? Second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Welcome along. Thank you.
Number five, consider request by D J and Ashley Odom to build a twenty-four hundred square foot detached garage instead of the allowed six hundred square foot on their property at eight point five Longwood Place.
Anyone here representing that address?
I don't, I don't see D J or Ashley here yet. Just out of Longwood, what, when this house was originally built, it was originally built without a carport. So, that's kind of where he's at now. Since then, he's had two kids, and it's time for, you know, carport, little upstairs, bonus rooms, so that's kind of where they at.
They gonna match the materials to the house?
Right, yeah, it's gonna look out there, yeah.
Is there a reason why they're not here tonight? Did they just have something come up, or?
Yeah, well, I talked to D J, I guess last week, yeah, but he may have, he may have forgotten about it, yeah.
Okay. So, from your standpoint, they're gonna match the house, same building materials, we've been consistent with?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got, he has a lot of acres in there, yeah.
Yeah, I just know. Is there any questions by the board? On this request? Not anyone here speaking opposition of it? Is there a motion to approve at this time? All right, two motions on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Number six, consider request by Charles Walker the third for a variance to allow him to build a building with a setback of twenty foot on one end and thirty one foot setback on the other end of the building instead of the required fifty foot setback at this property located on Highway four sixty-eight.
Mr. Walker, can you approach the podium, please?
How are y'all tonight?
Just wanna start out with what your business plan is, where you're located, and just move from there, okay, bud?
Here, I got some pictures right here. So I've got this, the lot right on the corner of four sixty-eight and Manor Street, and it's just under, just under two acres there that I've got. And I'd like to put in, it's all zone C three commercial, and like to put in some, you know, multi-use commercial warehouse space there. And I've got planned right now to put, you know, four buildings up, but I'd like to start with the building in the very back corner, the corner of Rice and Manor, approximately five thousand square feet. And I'm requesting to, you know, change the setback from fifty feet to twenty feet on that very back building, so I could, you know, maximize the space of the, of the land there.
And what kind of type of building materials are you planning to discuss, Brad?
We, we, this is really preliminary now, we hadn't really went through our architect standards, so that's kind of where we at now.
We've had a little bit of a discussion about that, trying to dress up that corridor a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. No, no, I'm planning on doing a decorative cinder block on the exterior, on all sides of it. And as I said, I, you know, my, my main objective for today was just to see if we could get the variance approved and then, and then move forward with the, finish up the planning of the building and get, and then getting that approved next.
Yeah, like, like I say, you can see on, you know, this, this is the backside of Manor here, that'd be where he's proposing putting the first building. Like I said, you know, he's, he's gonna put his screening up, you know, to buy the R one from the, the C three. Like, like I say, you know, those streets are a lot narrow, not, not a lot of traffic in that area, not a lot of, you know.
So, did you do the rest, going through the?
Right, yeah, yes. Yeah, that's on his property, yeah.
Yeah, when he presents the site plan to us, our engineers are gonna have to approve before we move forward.
Did you talk to the homeowners? Did we have a conversation with them?
Not directly yet, no, sir.
He fits the use as far as his own is concerned. It's a conforming request. Any additional questions for Mr. Walker by the board?
These setbacks wouldn't affect the visibility of any traffic trying to come through their streets?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Does anyone here speak in opposition to this? If not, is there a motion to approve? Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Before we move into, this is my fault, this, go ahead, Charles, I appreciate it, man. You had to get in. I'm moving fast tonight, but I messed my fellow up, Isaac. I want Isaac and all his, his family to come forward. We're gonna go ahead and stop the meeting and, before we go into the public hearings, you get this sleeping baby, and I don't want that, I want to make sure we take care of her. Good job, man. Proud of you.
Congrats, buddy. Congrats.
So when you have that many people show up for promotional approval, you know that you're, you're living right, Isaac. And all your brothers in blue in here with you, man. Y'all got a good thing going on. Thank you for everything that you do for the City of Pearl. Be safe.
Thank y'all.
All right, moving into the twenty-one nineteen elevens.
Determine whether or not the owners and those certain parcels of real property which are listed herein are in such a condition or state as to be unsightly and unkept or otherwise administered to the public health and safety of the community, and therefore prohibited to pursue it under chapter twenty-four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pearl, Mississippi, and section twenty-one nineteen eleven of the Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two as an individual. Jane Patrick, and located at three oh nine Childry Road, Pearl, Rankin County, Mississippi, three nine two zero, Lake.
Ms. Patrick, will you approach the podium, please, ma'am? Can you, can you approach the podium to speak? Well, let's get in front of the mic, please, and let's discuss it.
It's not on that.
Well, let's talk about which part of that property is yours.
Excuse me?
Let's talk about which prop, which part of the property is yours?
Three oh nine Childry Road.
Okay, the house?
The house belonged to my mother.
Okay.
The property, I have a picture of the survey, where there's a split down the middle. I know right where the split is. Have a picture of it that we can transfer to anybody's home that wants a picture of it. I wanna sell it, be done with it, and be through. And my aunt is eighty-seven years old, and she's dragging her feet.
So?
And...
The information that we received, there's nobody in the house, correct?
But nobody's living in the house, but I had a child that my parents wouldn't make him do right, and he never did right. They got in trouble, and then they both passed away. He just squatted into their house, and I'm pretty sure that he was doing some pretty bad things, 'cause he just bought himself twenty years in the big house.
Okay, so you're?
So, I've been afraid to go over there, I mean, literally afraid to set foot in my own house.
Well, I understand that. So, on the, on the flip side of that, how long has it not had water, Brad?
It's not had water since we had a leak out there where they put that?
Excuse me, let me talk to him for just a second here. He has this...
I wanna say it was around twenty twenty, around twenty twenty.
So how long has the house been unoccupied?
It's been a while, it's been twenty-three years.
Okay. I'm, excuse me, ma'am, I'm gonna ask some questions, and we're gonna have a, okay, my bad. Do I need to speak up? Frank, can you help me out? I know you have it on your phone. So how long has the house been unoccupied?
How long has it been unoccupied? I'm not sure, because I don't know when he left. I know that he went to wherever they sent him to, I think in August.
I get that. When were, when were there not supposed to be someone living there? I guess that's the better question. When were there was someone not supposed to be living there?
And we've been working on cleaning this up, but it's, we went in there and it took us over a month the last time. Because he made such a mess.
All right. We have a little bit of a communication problem, 'cause, no, you can't hear that.
I understand.
I'm trying to be mindful of that. Brad, what's the recommendation from community developer?
I would recommend, you know, bringing the property into compliance. Like I say, this, this has been going on since about twenty twenty. This is in Auden and Foyes District. He's contacted our department numerous times over this property. It's, it's across, it used to be the Mississippi Bay, it's now it's the Mud Month. Every time the property needs cutting, we have to notify you, you know? And it's, like I say, you can look at the conditions of the home.
It's behind the house.
Probably not in, you know, structurally...
Who's been in the backyard being nosy?
Right, but, you know, you got, you know, the carnage needs painting, cleaning, you know? It's just, it's an unsightly assore for, for Childry Road.
We're trying to clean it out and assess whether it's worth salvaging, right now. That's what's happening.
I understand.
Well, I think that, let's, let me, let me, let me step in here, so we can just be consistent with what we've done in the past. To be honest with you, ma'am, there's not been any progress over there in a very long time. I ride by there, I'm not by there quite a bit, I ride the scene quite a bit. So, I'm gonna ask the board to be consistent with what we do in the past, adjudicate the property, and then give us forty-five days.
I can understand you.
Well, we will communicate it after, after the, after the board meeting, make sure you're understanding, and we've communicated all the facts. But that's my recommendation, that we demo the house. That we tear the house down if you can't get it in compliance in forty-five days.
Do what with it?
Somebody, somebody come in here and help me out here.
They're gonna recommend to give you forty-five days to fix the house and clean the property up, or the, or the city's gonna tear it down, is what the recommendation is.
That's what we're trying to do.
We got forty-five days.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know if you can have them there, I don't know what happened.
I got you.
Okay. Look, for the sake of the conversation, for the forty-five days, we wanna make sure that, we can't tell our contractor we go to, but we can, we can say, hey, you can go to the phone book and look at this particular person that can provide repairs. But in the meantime, just because of what the past effects of the house and what it looks like in our business district?
We're gonna, we're gonna talk.
I think we need to reaffirm to our recommendation of what we've done in the past. All right, so let's just make sure that we communicate properly, 'cause I don't want her going out without being told everything that she needs to know, just because of the barrier here. But Brad, that was your recommendation? Okay. All right, is there anybody speaking opposition to this?
I've got a child in the hospital and I need to get home.
All right, if there's not? If there's not anybody speaking opposition to this, is there a motion? All right, there's two motions on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Moving forward.
Donna Karen Reddick, and located at seven thirty-nine Lagoon Way, Pearl, Rankin County, Mississippi, three nine two zero.
Is anyone here representing that address? Brad, tell us about it, bud.
Yeah, these, these, it's two mobile homes on one parcel is what this is. Both of them are unsightly, unkept. I know from talking with Officer Steen, I know PD has been out there multiple times, animal control, I believe Officer Steen, he, he, he could tell you a little bit more about what was on the inside, but, like I say, he, he, I've seen some footage where it was flea infestation in both of them, it's just, yeah. But, uh, like I say, he, he, I seen some footage where it was a flea infestation in both of them. It's just, yeah, holes in the floor.
Are they occupied?
Fee seed, no. Apparently, apparently it appears, wouldn't you say they just use them as storage or...
Your woman on the right side, for store, she was having that, nothing to do with that for eight months.
Yeah, Mandy, Mandy confirmed that, that the owner did say she uses it nothing but for storage.
So both of them are stored?
Pretty much.
So we've never been inside these to inspect them?
No. I mean, these, these are property owners. These are, yeah, they, they wasn't rentals.
And they're just vacant now?
Right.
Have we done, we've done our due diligence, submit statute requiring the notification of the owners?
Correct.
No contact at all?
No.
Well, what's the recommendation, Brad?
I would, I would recommend staying consistent with the forty-five days and have them removed.
That is the recommendation by the chief building official of the city of Pearl. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that? If not, is there a motion?
Thank you, ma'am.
There's two motions on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Number nine and ten, MJH LLC and located at 3690 and 3698 Hollywood Avenue, Pearl, Rankin County, Mississippi, 3920.
If you, as y'all can see, this is where the old Woods Equipment slays pawn shop. Uh, you know, these, these are some, some property that they, they've been unsightly and unkept. Uh, and through that communication with the owner, they're, they're in the same understanding. You know, they're not willing to invest money into them, you know, and so, and like I say, they're, they're in agreement with, you know, removing them. They, they feel that it would be a more, uh, marketable per se property with, with a clean slate, you know, on that corner.
Who does all?
Harrington. Ms. Harrington.
MJH LLC. So they are trying to sell the property?
Right, yeah, trying to sell the property, but not the, the, the buildings are...
Not in good shape.
Not in good shape. Uh, plumbing, it's, it's numerous things. Uh, that's, that's one reason Woods Equipment had, had left there.
Is there more questions from the board to Brad regarding this unsightly properties?
Yes, all three of them.
All three? Okay. What's your recommendation, Brad?
I recommend staying consistent forty-five days and having the property, the structures removed.
Alright. For the sake of the public hearing, is anyone here to speak in opposition to that? If not, is there a motion to approve? There's two motions on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Brad.
General Business Number One announced the bids for city, for city depositories for a term of four calendar years beginning January 2025 and ending December of 2029. Uh, we received bids from Community Bank, Origin Bank, Trustmark Bank, Priority One Bank, and Paynance Bank, and I would just request that we take no action tonight until we can review those and make our recommendation on the first four in the January.
So we need a continuance of this for January sixth? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Number two, consider adopting a fee schedule at the city of Pearl, Mississippi.
Casey, you brought this off. Is there something you wanna discuss?
It's primarily community development that's on the fee schedule?
It is. It's reflecting what zoning amendment was, right? Uh, correct?
You said you'd say where you had to inspect properties annually.
Yeah, the, the old, the old language was where we had to inspect rentals annually, which is we never did. We, now we just wanna do it between change of occupancies. Each time a tenant moves in, moves out.
Right, 'cause it says inside the, that the zoning ordinance which you amended earlier, but it does reference the fee schedule throughout that ordinance. In addition, there was a concerns about the record as well. The record fee bill is in the, that, I, I believe the language changed because the first couple days, uh, the record services were trying to correct me. It was been a month or two.
Just approach the podium when you talk, so the public can hear.
Yeah, they were trying to add storage from the time the vehicle went on their lot, even though it had a hole through PD, you know, was trying to explain to them, you can't charge it when we have a hole because we're denying access to their vehicle. And they said, well, it's not on the fee schedule, and so...
Yeah, so it's clean enough the fact that the towing companies who are on the record list were charging fees when they, the person couldn't go get their car. So we're like, no, you can't do that. And so that's what it's making it more clear for the approved companies on the record list in order, so that's not passed on, right? I mean, so they do tow the car, and they'll get paid ultimately, but it's not why they, the person can't return their own vehicle, correct?
Additional questions, Casey? Want to still on business side? Alright, is there a motion to approve the fee schedule, item twenty-eight? There's two motions on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
Number three, consider executive session to discuss personnel matters in the police department.
Is there a motion? Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.